Visitors, anyone that wants to approach the podium and give us your name and address, then you'll have three minutes to speak.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor.
How are you, sir?
Councilperson, it's a pleasure to be here. My name is Robert Wright. I live at thirteen ninety Jessica Drive in South Winds subdivision. I am here on behalf of several residents, including my friend Louis Bob Gardner. We would like to advocate, or we need your help, to have a sidewalk from South Winds Drive up to Route C. It would make it a lot safer to get to the sidewalk across the street that goes on over to Business Fifty-four. It's a nice sidewalk, but it just needs to come down a little further. And we would like to see that happen. It's about two tenths of one mile. We're not expecting it to happen overnight, but we would like somehow to get the process started, and that's why we're here tonight.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak to the council? Yes, sir. Give us your name and your address.
I'm Jim Lynn. I live out that subdivision also. The Tennyson Road going from gravel road to Mocane Road, we have a lot of speeders down through there. They come off that gravel road and they hit that bit of asphalt and speeding thirty mile an hour, and I'm, because my front door is the only one that faces Tennyson Road, and I'm retired, and I hear them going down through there, and I knew they're doing at least fifty. And with these other residents out here in the subdivision, that's a major safety issue. And I have gone to the police department myself, two, three different times complaining. And every one, every one of them have said, it's not a high priority. And my question was, well, when is it a high priority when someone gets killed? So I'm not watching it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wish to speak to the council?
I'm Derek Collier. I live at South Winds Lake Estates, address six nine one Sherry Lane. And I just want to add to both Jim and, and, you know, the comments made about the sidewalk and kind of what Jim just said about the speeders is, is kind of reinforces my, I think our opinion about that sidewalk. There's a lot of fast people that go down that road. Matter of fact, the only ticket my son ever had, he's thirty years old, the only ticket my son's ever gotten was on that road whenever he was sixteen. And, you know, just back those, back in those days, we had a lot more patrols out there and don't see as many now, but I know it's a changing world. But getting back to the sidewalk, that's the priority for me, for us right now, is traversing that road. I run a couple of days a week, I try to, and my walk, my wife walks almost every day, five miles, and she's addicted. But I know traversing, going from South Winds Drive up to the new Tennyson and running down that, for my house, it's three miles, so that's my, that's my, my distance I like to cover. That hill is treacherous and it never fails, never fails to meet two cars at the same time. And so your only option there is to just hold your ground, say, I got the right of way, and hopefully they can get around you without hitting you, or you step off in the grass, which today that grass is knee, knee deep, literally knee deep, I'm not exaggerating. And so Louis, I know, would like to expand some of his horizons and get up on that beautiful sidewalk on the new Tennyson, because it's serene. It's, it's, I love running that because it's just, it's, it's relaxing. And that's what it was designed for. Somebody had that foresight many years ago to put a sidewalk in that road. All we're asking is maybe to go down a couple tenths of a mile and finish the job, to get those people off the road, get those young families, to get myself off the road, to get, so Louis can get up there. And, you know, he, that hill is what, really is what the problem is, and there's nothing you can do with that. So, you know, we have a lot of young families out in our neighborhood. We've grown exponentially over the last fifteen years. We've been out there twenty-five years. We're the thirtieth house. I think there's about, probably about a hundred and twenty houses out there now. I quit counting a couple of years ago. But our neighborhood attracts a lot of young families with children on bikes, strollers, you know, and they, they walk every single night, and a lot of them walk down that road. And it's always, I'm, when I drive into their, out of the neighborhood and see them walking as a group going up to the new Tennyson, it always, I just kind of cringe a little bit because that hill's treacherous. And the cars, well, they buy you pretty fast. I've had cars miss me just barely, you know, and if you step off to give them room, you're stepping off in a sloped area, grass is knee, 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 knee deep, and if it's slick, you're going to slip and fall anyway. So you've got some tough choices to make when you see cars coming. But all we're asking is maybe the vision of somebody, whoever installed that beautiful sidewalk.
Your three minutes is up, thank you.
Carry that vision off two tenths of a mile.
Thank you, sir. Okay, anyone else? Seeing no one else come forward, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Tonight, it's the minutes from May twenty-seventh and June the tenth, and also the apartment, appointment of Debbie March to the Park Board and Carmen Brandt to the Human Resources Commission. Do we have any discussion on that?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Very well. Motion's been made in second to pass the consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Very well. Now we'll move on to unfinished business. Do we have the DOA report tonight?
We do have the DOA report tonight, Mayor. We can't miss that. So I want to call attention to a few things. Of course, we had a few community events and things that took place this past month. I want to just first off highlight the Leadership Callaway event that we're very proud to be a part of, as well as the badging ceremony for the Fulton Fire Department. I would encourage you guys to definitely take a look through your report. It was a very busy month during the month of May with licensing, permitting, and a lot of letters that went out for abatement and, and grass and weed issues. So with that, we have staff here and we're available to answer any questions that you might have.
Do we have any questions?
I have, I have a couple, Mr. Mayor. Okay, on page seven, under Parks Maintenance, the last bullet is gather fire extinguisher for Coors Meyer Fire to inspect. These are located in several areas of the parks facilities. My question is, is that inspection that our fire department could perform? Sorry, Chief, thank you.
That's all right, Russell Singh, Fire Chief. So the inspections that we do, the city does have employees that go around and do a monthly inspection. This is the annual inspections that is required because they can go out expired and so they, the company comes in and they will look at it and make sure hydrostatic testing is done and all of that. So it's not something that we can do.
We don't have the capability of doing that.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Then I think, so the next page is for street and traffic. There's some pictures here of West Tenth Street and Uwe Avenue, and I'm, I can't spot the differences, so I'm gonna ask. Sorry, Darrell.
That's because there is no differences, it got double entered.
Okay.
It's the same picture twice.
Okay.
Really wanted to reemphasize that for you. We wanted you to take a, a good look at it, Mike, and make sure it was a test.
I was looking for the five differences, but I couldn't find any.
Yeah, so, so you passed, you passed, all right.
I'm sorry?
You passed the test. It's supposed to have been a picture from each side.
Okay. What was the, what was the point of the pictures?
The point of the pictures, that project is complete.
Oh.
And that's that, that corner up there by the old railroad station had the bag curve in it and all that.
Sure, sure.
How much nicer that looks now if that project's completed.
Okay, great, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right, thanks. That's all I had, Mr. Mayor, thank you, and the city staff.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Girl, I'm gonna think you're in one of the best roads in town, on that important ward. Oh, it's awesome. Nice to drive.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion in a second to approve the DOA report. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? We'll move on to the financial statement.
Dustin Doherty, CFO, City of Fulton, excuse me. City of Fulton recorded four months of sales tax in two thousand twenty-five. Collections are down point one percent from two thousand twenty-four. Use tax is up thirty-two point three percent. There were three payroll cycles in May. A payroll cycle consists of two weeks, so the expenses for personnel will be proportionally higher. Do you have any questions after looking at the report?
Any questions?
Move for acceptance.
Second.
Very well. Have a motion in second to pass the financial statement. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you, Dustin. Okay, we have no unfinished business, so we'll move on to new business. The presentation and acceptance of the twenty twenty-four City of Fulton audit, and we have two ladies here from Williamson Keepers, and they're gonna tell us all about it.
Well, good evening, everyone. I'm Amanda Schultz, I'm an audit partner at Williamson Keepers, and joining me tonight is Mercedes Kendall. She's one of our audit supervisors, and she was in charge of the city's audit again this year. So we will be consistent with prior years, presenting our summary report to the council this evening. This hits the highlights of the individual reports that we issued as a result of our audit of the city's financial statements for the calendar year that ended December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. I believe in your blue bound copies of the reports, you should have all of these in the order that the summary report will follow. So we'll start with the annual comprehensive financial report, and the next section of our summary report is the financial statements, and those are essentially included together in your blue book. So, the city, every year for many years, has prepared an annual comprehensive financial report, which is a sign of excellence in financial reporting because it includes a lot more information than that required by generally accepted accounting principles. So all of the additional information that's found in the introductory section and the statistical section of the report are additional requirements of the Government Finance Officers Association. So the city does put together, prepares those two sections, and cumulatively with the financial statement section, submits this report to that GFOA organization who awards a certificate to governmental entities that meets, meet the signs of excellence in financial reporting. So for a number of years, I'm sure it's listed in here somewhere, the city has received that certificate, so it gets included in the next year's report. So in this year's report, you'll see the two thousand twenty-three certificate on last year's audited financial statements, and the city expects that the two thousand twenty-four financial statements will also receive a certificate to be included in next year's report. So moving on to the financial statements, since those are the only requirement to be included in the report under generally accepted auditing standards, accounting and auditing standards, we'll focus on the financial statements. So we are only responsible for the opinion letter, which is towards the front of, of that report, and it's probably the most important information throughout, so I wanted to highlight it. We issued an unmodified or a clean opinion on the city's financial statements again this year. In our opinion, they're presented fairly in all material respects, in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles or GAAP. So the best opinion that the city or any governmental entity can receive, and it means that the users of your financial statements can rely upon them. Management is ultimately responsible for the preparation and fair presentation of the financial statements. As I just mentioned, that opinion letter or the independent auditor's report is really the only part that's our responsibility of this entire blue bound book there. But we did prepare the financial statements again this year. It is a common practice for us as independent auditors to do so, but they were reviewed and approved by management before they were issued, essentially taken on as management's representation of its financial statements, both the statements and the notes that support them. Just a reminder that we do use our judgment anytime we perform a financial statement audit, regardless of how long we've been auditing the entity. So we've been working with the city for a number of years, but each year during our planning process, we perform a risk assessment by looking at balances, transactions, kind of determining what may have changed during the year, looking at processes and controls, and that helps us really refine or hone in our audit procedures on areas where the financial statements could be misstated, meaning that we don't audit everything, but we've applied enough audit procedures to these financial statements in order to be able to give that unmodified or clean opinion on them. On page two of the summary report, the first bullet point notes that the financial statements themselves do include two different sets of financial statements again this year. That is very common for governmental entities, especially municipalities such as the city of Fulton. The first set of financial statements are the government-wide financial statements, so that puts all of the city's funds together, as well as any long-term assets and liabilities are presented in those statements. Those are just on two pages, and then after that, there are several pages of individual fund statements that provide a lot more detail on the city's governmental and proprietary funds. There's then a table in the middle of page two of the summary report that summarizes the highlights from those government-wide financial statements that again, kind of puts everything together. Everything that the city has to report are included in those financial statements and summarized here. The audited financial statements themselves are not comparative, so you'll just see detailed information for two thousand twenty-four presented. But there is a section, the management's discussion and analysis, that the city does prepare, and it discusses the changes in the various categories, because that one section of the report is comparative. That's on pages four through eleven, if I didn't mention that, so you can check out those pages for kind of a comparative analysis between the two years that are presented in this summarized table. The prior year column, two thousand twenty-three, does have an asterisk indicated that it wasn't restated for restatements that were made during two thousand twenty-four. Mercedes will touch on this a little bit in a few minutes. There was a new accounting standard that the city was required to implement related to compensated absences, and it was required to be applied to prior years as well. So there was a restatement to beginning fund balance or net position for the funds that were impacted. But the prior year column of that summarized table and prior year information in that MDNA are not restated as a result. I will also cover the single audit real quick. So the city did incur expenditures of federal awards exceeding seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars during two thousand twenty-four, so that required a single audit in addition to the financial statement audit. There is a schedule of expenditures of federal awards or a CIFA towards the back of the audited financial statements that details all the individual federal grants that were received and spent during the year. So the city had federal expenditures of a little over two million dollars during two thousand twenty-four. So we issued two additional reports, one related to financial reporting that did not have any material weaknesses identified, as well as no instances of non-compliance. And then we also issued a report on internal control and compliance related to the major federal programs that we were required to audit due to their overall significance and risks. So that's where we performed the vast majority of our testing in the single audit. That report on those programs expressed an unmodified or a clean opinion on compliance and did not have any findings. So two clean reports coming out of the single audit this year. I am going to turn it over to Mercedes to cover our auditor's communication letter. If there are any questions about the financial statements, the whole annual comprehensive financial report, the single audit, any, any of those pieces you guys have questions or comments about?
Thanks, Amanda. I'm going to cover the auditor's communication letter, which is the last item in your blue packet you have, and I'm just going to cover the highlights, but this letter consists of comments about the audit process and results that we're required by our auditing standards to share with the governing board of an entity. So for the city, the council serves that role. The city did implement two new accounting standards this year, which were GASB statement one hundred over accounting changes and error corrections and statement one oh one over compensated absences. GASB one hundred clarified how any accounting changes or error corrections are required to be shown in the financial statements. Sorry, previously, if there was a restatement, there was a note disclosure required. That requirement didn't change, but what did require, or what did change is on the face of the financial statements, it calls out those, any corrections or restatements more clearly. So there is an example of that on page thirteen. And it's towards the bottom of the page where it's summarizing net position. So prior to this year, if there were any restatements, it was just included in that net position beginning line, so it, it didn't call out the detail of what the restatement was. So GASB one hundred now requires those additional lines, so you don't have to go digging into the back of the financial statements to find that note to call out what those changes are. And then GASB one oh one, which Amanda already mentioned, over compensated absences. The city was already accruing for compensated absences, but the previous requirement was only to accrue a liability for any absences that were required to be paid out to employees at termination or retirement. And then GASB one hundred changed that requirement to also require a liability for any leave more likely than not to be paid out. And so for the city, there was an additional liability that needed to be recorded related to sick leave balances, and that is the piece Amanda mentioned, where we also had to go back and look at what that liability would have been as of twelve thirty-one twenty-three to come up with that restatement for two thousand twenty-four's beginning balances. Looking forward to next year, there will be one new statement or accounting standard required for the city to implement, which is over certain risk disclosures. We are not expecting a financial impact of the implementation of this standard, but it may require some additional note disclosures. And we'll work with the city next year to help them make any of those changes as needed. We also evaluated the key factors and assumptions used to develop significant estimates in the financial statements in determining they are reasonable in relation to the financial statements taken as a whole. The financial statement disclosures are neutral, consistent, and clear, and all required disclosures to support the financial statements are included. We found the accounting records to be in good order, however, we did propose a few adjustments as a result of our audit procedures, and there is a summary of those adjustments in the back of this letter, so it'll be the very last thing in your packet. We had no disagreements with management on accounting or auditing issues, and we had no difficulties in performing our audit. We felt we received full cooperation from the city staff. And then related to internal control, although the scope of our engagement was not directed towards an opinion on the adequacy of internal control, we do consider internal control as a basis for designing our audit procedures. So given this limitation and inherent limitations on internal control, we did not identify any material weaknesses in internal control. Any questions over that letter or any of the items Amanda previously covered?
Yes, ma'am. So you said this, the, the So, you said this, the, the adjustments that are attached, I'm not sure where that is in here.
It's going to be in the very back of your packet. So, that last section is the auditor's communication letter, and then the last three or four pages of that letter is the attachment that includes the detail of those adjustments.
Okay.
Start from page six.
Page six.
Yep. Yeah, it's behind that divider page.
Okay, any other questions?
Any questions about the summary report specifically or the audit in general? We'd be happy to answer for you all this evening.
Thank you, ladies, very much. We appreciate it. I know you worked hard, and I know our staff did. I hope they didn't give you too much problems, especially candy you do.
We've worked with candy for a while now. Yeah, we appreciate the opportunity to do the audit and work with you all each year, and thank you for your time this evening.
Thank you both very much.
Thank you very much.
And again, council, I know this is a lot of information to digest, so certainly, as you review it, if you do have any questions, please feel free to let the mayor know. We would be happy to direct those to Amanda or Mercedes as well for some follow-up. And with that, we do need to take a motion this evening to accept the 2024 financial audit.
Do we have a motion?
Motion to accept the 2024 audit.
Second.
Second.
Very well, discussion? I think it was pretty self-explanatory.
I'd really like more time to digest this, so I would propose that we postpone this to the next, the next meeting.
Well, we'll go ahead, we can go ahead and vote on it. If you've got a question, we can.
We do have to meet the, we do have to meet the deadline here before the end of the month, so I would ask that we go ahead and accept it this evening, and then we can definitely pass along any questions, as we have always done in the past.
Okay, it's dated June 18th. I just got it last night.
Received it today.
Okay, any other questions? Very well, we have a motion on the floor to accept the 2024 audit. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
Would you do a roll call vote, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Ms. Hanson?
Yes.
Mr. Henchy?
Yes.
Mr. Luther?
No.
Ms. Nelson?
Yes.
Ms. Reclu? Mr. Washington?
Yes.
Mr. West?
No.
Mr. Combs?
No.
Four form, four affirmative, three opposed.
Okay, we'll move on to the capital budget. As you know, I am required to present you with the capital budget on the, at this meeting, which you have in your packet, I believe. There won't be any discussion on it tonight or vote. I want you all to look it over, and if you have any questions or concerns, please let Courtney or I know, and we'll try to answer your questions on the, on the capital budget for 2026.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, I couldn't remember on the golf course cart path, was that, I know it's been brought up a lot in the past, did we, I can't remember, did we approve that for this year, or is that on, where's that on, on the capital?
Well, this is, this is not set in stone. We're still going to be looking at it.
This is 2026.
We don't actually vote on it until probably October. We'll have a lot of changes by then, and that's one of the things we're looking at, too.
Was it in this year's capital budget, or? All right, thank you.
To clarify that a little bit further, it was actually not approved on the 2025 capital improvement list that was approved in the 2025 budget, however, it was requested item. So, we do have some improvements that are being made this year, but the replacement of the entire cart path is not in the 2025 budget.
Thanks, we have a.
It is not in this document, however, it perhaps will be in the 2026 proposal.
Okay, well, excuse me, we'll move on to council concerns. Councilman Combs?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The Planning and Zoning Commission did not have a reason to meet this evening. We will meet next month per legal guidelines. In terms of concerns, I don't think I have any really this evening, other than I would vouch for the, the need for a sidewalk over in the area they were talking about. I know there's a lot of people that use that, so I'd be interested in at least seeing a study of what it would cost to do that. I mean, I run over there all the time, and I know countless kids that run that route and people that walk that way regularly. I'd say it's probably one of the heavier foot-traffic areas other than Business 54, so that's it.
Okay, thank you. Councilwoman Hanson?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I do have a couple of concerns. I was wondering about the trash versus recycled trash. I had someone mention to me that sometimes they go in the same truck and, and wanting to know if that recycled trash ever made it to recycling or if it went to the landfill.
Daryl, can you come up and explain that, please?
Thank you.
Yeah, we pick up the trash weekly, and then every other week, one week is recyclables and the other is yard waste. I did go talk to Solid Waste about your question, and sometimes people have not recyclables in their recycle can, so they do dump them into the garbage truck if they have something that can't be recycled, it's not available. Other than that, no, it goes to recycling plant in, in Jeff City.
Thank you.
Daryl, along that, is it if there's something like a glass bottle that gets put into the recycling truck, doesn't that like make the whole area non-recyclable?
It doesn't take much to contaminate the load, but a lot of times, not a lot of times, sometimes it may be somebody probably by mistake put a bag of cat litter in the recycling one instead of the trash, and that, they notice that pretty quick, so. Does that help?
Then usually, just to add to that, if, if that does occur, I believe I've received the naughty sticker as well, right, on the, on the lid of the can that says, "We didn't do this because you broke the rules."
Right, yep, usually you get a naughty sticker. Yes, sir.
I also had that naughty sticker brought back. I was so embarrassed, I thought it would be an offense.
Thank you, Daryl. Mr. Mayor, I also had a concern of, or request, I think, to know if there is any astroturf available for the bocce ball courts that are at the soccer field for Special Olympics. I don't know if there's some, we have some volunteers that would love to lay it, if we had any, or if that was something that might be in the works.
Charlene McArter, Parks Superintendent, we do not have any, like, sitting around available to do that type of project, but it is something that we can look at and consider.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you. And then, other than that, I just wanted to make a special thank you to all of our EMS departments, because they all came out to I Can Bike Camp and ran along with all the riders and had a great time, so I appreciate them showing up.
Great, thank you. Anything else?
Thank you.
All right. Councilman Henchy?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. The Public Safety Commission meeting will be meeting in two days, on Thursday, June 26, from 17:30 to 18:30. That'd be 5:30 in the evening to 6:30 in the evening. And then I do have a concern just popped up just now. I'm concerned about the financial report not being approved, and we're not going to make that timeline. I'd like to suggest that we hold a special meeting to, to that approval, and that's all I have.
Councilman Luther?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. First off, appreciation, I see our, our splash pad is up and going, so thank you for your leadership on continuing to drive for the, getting all the required parts necessary. I know a lot of people in the community value that asset, and especially with this current environment and temperature, it's, at least it was running. You got other updates as I see you approaching?
Sorry to interrupt, Brad. We have not officially opened it, just to clarify. It has been running periodically as we're still maintenance-ing it. So, for us to evaluate and assess if it's going to continue to stay open, it, the system needs to run. So, we will update Facebook as soon as possible when it is up and going.
Awesome. Well, thank you for your continued leadership on that, trying to get that back in service.
I'll pass that on to the maintenance staff.
Excellent, thank you. Some other items, really just to go along with Councilman Combs, on the sidewalks, I know that sidewalk, as well as there's others in town, other areas, even on Business 54 that don't have sidewalks, I would suggest a work session. Maybe we could work with Daryl and his team, really, one, where are the need for sidewalks, and maybe start to kind of prioritize those and getting those into the capo budget or capital long-term plan, and Timo, I don't know, so. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Nelson?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. No concerns tonight. There was a Public Utility Board meeting yesterday. Our shared power project is, we're continuing to move forward with the discussions on that, and I'm really looking forward to seeing, you know, how that transpires and what comes of that, but that is still in the works. We are still discussing with MPUA. We are doing a really great job as a team at looking at projections and numbers, and we have 70% of our gas booked approximately, which I'm really excited for, because it, it just allows us to have more of a grasp on the money that we're spending and how we're using and, and really looking ahead at those utilities. You know, it's such, our community is so strong in our utility department because we own all of our utilities, and as a community, that's huge. There's a lot of small communities that are struggling because they don't have any say-so. And so, I'm just really, I'm really proud of our utilities and those departments for the hard work that they do, because there's so much that goes into it. The numbers are changing every single day, and I just can't express how thankful I am to have such a great utility department, so I just want to make sure to express that. Our board that we have, they're always engaged, they're always looking, they're always asking questions, and I just really appreciate the fact that they do that. So, we, I encourage everybody to come to those meetings, too. They are open to the public. If you want to know more about our utilities, I know that that's something that is active on social media, please come, because to get an understanding of how it works and the intricate nature of that is so powerful, and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Woohoo! City of Fulton.
Councilman Washington?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I can piggyback on the sidewalk situation on Crestwood. I think before we go anywhere else, I think we ought to do that one first, but any sidewalks have got it. Anyway, the Parks and Board, I wasn't able to attend the last meeting that you had, had some personal things that we had to take care of with the death of my in-law. But anyway, there's a couple of things that I need to, wanted to bring up, was I want to thank the city of Fulton, the police department, and we had a great, I believe, the street fair was a success. I didn't believe there was any incidents. It was, it appeared to be going smooth, and people that had vendors that were downtown just looked like we had a good, good, it was a good time for a lot of people. And so, I'm thankful for that, and the weather held out. Usually, we get a storm during the, during the street fair, but also, the other, the attention that I want to bring to, what's the latest on about the bridge, Langley Woods? Have you got any information on that, any grants?
You're hitting on all the things on tonight's agenda, Councilwoman Washington, so to talk to you a little bit about the bridge, we have an agreement here on Resolution Number 3584 for the design of that bridge. We did receive grant funding for it, so we will continue down that path. And then, Resolution 3583 actually is a TAP grant application for sidewalks along Crestwood, so I'm happy to report we can hit both of those things for you tonight.
Councilman Washington, I understand that congratulations are in order on your daughter. I know it'll be an exciting time for you.
And yeah, I just want to mention, Juneteenth, at the Guiding Light, coming up on the, this Sunday.
The 29th.
And that'll be up at the Guiding Light Church, so anyone, I think it's from two to five, I believe it is, something like that. From two to three, I think, will be just kind of a meet and greet, and then I was told that around 3 o'clock, we'll start the program, and he's got some really good speakers, I think it's going to be there, so that'll be an exciting day. Okay, Councilman West?
All right, so, Juneteenth celebration is, as you said, Guiding Light Missionary Baptist Church, which is 1023 Westminster Avenue, from two to five program, two to five, and the program starts at 3:00. There'll be live entertainment, some inspirational speakers, Hawaiian shave ice, and face painting. So, come out if you're, if you are able to attend that function.
I believe the door is open at 2:00, though, right?
Right, so it's, it's 2:00 to 5:00, and then the actual program starts at 3:00, so you can get your face painted and have some shaved ice and then enjoy the present, yeah, up there, whatever. Okay. I won't go any further than that. Okay, so, as far as the audit goes, I just want more time to review it, and we had the same issue last, last year, so would just request more time in, in the future on that. As, I want to thank the citizens that came out to talk to us about the sidewalk and the speeding, it's south winds. I will remind everyone that we do have a cost-sharing program for our sidewalks. It's not a lot of money, but it's some, and I'm not sure who the property owners are there, that are there, that would, if they would be interested in, in taking advantage of that program. Same thing with the sidewalks on Crescent, Crestwood, pardon me. So, totally support that, and, you know, let's see what we can do to, it just kind of helps stretch our dollars a little bit to address more items. But I agree with Councilman Luther, I think we do need to have more, more of a comprehensive plan on what we're going to do, rather than, you know, we have this complaint, so we'll deal with it, we have this complaint, so we'll deal with it, instead of having a holistic approach. That's all I have.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am, Councilman. West, the only concern I have is yes, yes, for repairs, for new sidewalks, repairs on sidewalks, yes, there has a plan for that, for man owners to have paid so much and whatever it is, but when you don't, when Crestwood has never had sidewalks, I think the city is, but.
Okay. We'll move on to resolutions. Resolution 3583, that's a TAP grant that we were just discussing. Councilwoman Hanson, you want to read that for us, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Resolution 3583, the TAP grant application. It's a resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the city of Fulton, Missouri, to sign all necessary documents in relation to an application for the Missouri Department of Transportation. Transportation Alternatives Program Grant to Make Improvements on Crestwood Drive and Establishing an Effective Date. I would like to make a motion to accept Resolution 3583.
Very well, do we have discussion on?
Daryl's going to give us nothing.
Okay.
We've just about got all the plans put together for this grant, and, and we think it'll score. We've just about got all the plans put together for this grant, and, and we think it'll score good because as an alternate transportation, it ties that ball field back to the sidewalks that's on Westminster. So between William Woods playing ball and stuff up there on that softball fields and baseball fields, we think it'll score really good because it ties that park back to an additional sidewalk already having existence. So that's, that's kind of the, the scoring of it, and to try to get that paid for for Crestwood and tie that park together.
So Daryl, we're, we have to have a minimum match of a hundred thousand dollars and require twenty percent. Where would that, where do those funds come from?
It won't be done till next year, so we'll be looking at it for the budget.
Okay, we'll budget it, okay. Does this include, this include stormwater and not just sidewalks, right?
Yes, it will include stormwater, stormwater and sidewalk, I believe, on one side.
Great, thank you.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Very well, we have the motion and second for Resolution Number Thirty-five-eight-three. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Okay, we'll move on to Resolution Thirty-five-eight-four, and that is the, the bridge construction up at William Woods. Do we have a motion on that?
Mr. Mayor, would you like me to read that?
What?
Would you like me to read that one?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, go ahead. I'm trying to get down here.
All right. Resolution Thirty-five-eight-four, Great River Engineering Agreement. A resolution authorizing the mayor on behalf of the City of Fulton, Missouri, to enter into an agreement with Great River Associates, doing business as Great River Engineering in Springfield, Missouri, for engineering services and establishing an effective date. I make a motion to adopt Resolution Number Thirty-five-eight-four at this council meeting.
Very well, now do we have discussion?
I would just have one question. I know it's that we use the same company that designed Second Street, and Second Street looks fantastic. Is there any consideration, assuming it would cost more, to somewhat keep the historic-esque feel of that area? I know it, the, the whole train thing played a big role in it, too.
Yeah, so that is absolutely an aspect that Daryl and I discussed with our engineer. Obviously, it's going to come down to cost and what funds have been provided for the project, but that's something they're aware of.
One thing I'd like to point out on this is it's saying that it'll take approximately one year to design and then four months to construct. So we're looking at sometime late next year where this would be in service. Is that correct? Okay. Just so the people aren't thinking it's going to happen in two weeks and that it's going to take a while. Thank you.
Okay, very well. All in favor of Resolution Thirty-five-eight-four, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you. We do have a couple of announcements. City Hall and Legends and Solid Waste will be closed on Friday, the Ju-, July the fourth for Independence Day. And I encourage all of you to come out to the Veterans Park for fireworks display that night. I think the DFW will be, be doing that for us.
Mr. Mayor, do we know where they are on their fundraiser?
On the what?
On the, the funding for the fireworks?
We have not had any kind of update where they're saying they're, they're going to need any, anymore, so.
They haven't come back to us, so I assume they had it on. Next council meeting will be July the eighth. And we will have a work session that evening at six thirty. And we do not have a need for an executive session tonight.
Before, before we adjourn?
All in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Do we have a second, all right?
I second it.
Yeah, I thought we did.
I was just going to ask, I was just trying to get my thoughts, yeah. I was going to ask, can we get an update on the cargo block situation?
Absolutely, thank you.